I call the meeting to order. If you want an agenda, I think there are agendas on the back seats here, so that you're welcome to have one. We'll be starting first with public comment, as we usually do. May I just remind you that if you wish to speak publicly here, you need to go over there to the microphone, because that's what connects us to FCTV and to the people at home. So if you're going to speak, please go to the microphone, please speak up to it, please give your name and what subject you're speaking on. So that would apply to anyone who wants to speak. So public comment, which would be first on anything that's not on the agenda. That's what this time is for. So if your subject is not on the agenda and you wish to speak, please come forward now.
Allison Leshen, Lantern Lane, and I'm talking about process. So I come tonight to voice a suggestion and a hope for the way that future meetings, not just of this board but all boards, are planned and run. That if someone proposes an agenda item before it actually appears on the agenda and comes up for discussion, that the following happen, where only if the answer is yes, do you move on to the next item. First, is this topic under our jurisdiction and do we have the authority to take the proposed action? Second, are there relevant town committees that should have input and have they been consulted and given a chance to weigh in? Third, are there other players, people with special knowledge, groups or organizations concerned with the issues at hand, and have they been consulted and given a chance to weigh in? Fourth, has the information gathered ahead of time from those parties been summarized and made available along with the meeting agenda for board members and the public to view? And finally, is there time allotted at the meeting for the public to comment and weigh in? I would argue that only if all of these steps have been taken should an item even appear on an agenda. That way you can have a thorough, informed discussion with all of the relevant parties and viewpoints represented from the outset. Decisions will be made drawing on all of this information. Though this process may seem long at first glance, it can in fact save time and aggravation because you only have to go around once. Volunteers on town committees feel respected and valued for their knowledge and input. Local organizations and key players feel included in the process, which may lead to them being cooperators rather than adversaries. Townspeople see that a board member or anyone else can't just stand up and make a proposal based on incomplete information, and that if they do, the chair, the staff person, or another board member will remind them that we don't govern that way by "I talked to a couple people and I think we should..." dot, dot, dot. That as a town, we expect more from our elected officials. I'm not naive enough to think that all will be roses and puppies, but I am 100% sure that you would not need the first agenda item tonight if that process had been followed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Thank you, Allison. I accept your rebuke. I think we were out of order. So, thank you. And I'm interested in the list that you compiled. I wonder if you could leave a copy of it here for us. Thank you. If there's no one else who wishes to make a public comment, the minutes. Paul?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of November 12, 2023. That's corrected by the members.
Could you please say that?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I...
Oh, we have to go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. So, John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye for Charlotte. Pam?
Aye.
And Pam? We'll take that as an aye. The minutes...
Aye.
There. Okay, moving on. Tonight we have a special presentation, the Bourne Rail Trail presentation, and we're expecting to hear from Catherine Jensen, who's chair of Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Keith Chetlin, president of Friends of the Bourne Rail Trail. So, Ms. Jensen, you're first listed. Would you like to come forward?
We're actually gonna come together. Hello, everyone. It's Catherine Jansen, but the town actually had my name misspelled until today, so that's been fixed.
And I'm Ken Chetlin.
Thank you.
So, thank you for responding to our request to appear before you. I'm the chair of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Ken is the president of Friends of Bourne Rail Trail. And our remarks will be brief, because this isn't the proper forum for a hearing on the Shining Sea Bike Way extension Bourne Trail. I do know that Tom Cahir of the CCRTA has responded with facts to questions from the planning board, and hopefully has laid much of the misinformation to rest. I respectfully point out that you have a resource in all things walking and biking, namely our committee, and a lot of churn could have been saved by a simple reach out to us. I'll leave you with some numbers that are important. Our ego counters show that last year, 302,000 people, 302,000 trips were taken on the Shining Sea Bike Way. In the warm months, about 350 people use the Shining Sea Bike Way to commute to work, and even in February, 75 people a day. And these are people walking, walking dogs, riding their bikes. There are people with walkers and wheelchairs, little kids, everybody, tourists, residents. And so, I guess I would say that it's the vision of folks in 1975 that made this happen. I'm sure they didn't expect that 302,000 trips would be taken on our little 11-mile gem in the crown of Falmouth, but indeed they are. So, at this point, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to respond to them, but that's the extent of our prepared remarks.
From both of you? Yes. Any questions?
Well, the two major issues that I have as a planner, or actually three major issues. It's solid waste, our ponds and estuaries, and affordable housing. And when we're looking at solid waste removal, when you look at tearing up the tracks, which are used for the train that removes solid waste, it can have ramifications way into the future. When...have you read the Cape Cod Commission's report?
Yes, I have.
And it says right here that the MassDEP has predicted that in-state MSW disposal activity at wasted energy facilities and landfills will be increasingly limited in the near-medium term. Therefore, out-of-state disposal options will be needed in the future. There are only two landfills in Massachusetts right now, Nantucket and Bourne. And some of the information I received and have seen on your website is that you're relying on the Bourne landfill. The Bourne landfill, 82% of that is owned by a private company that transports...all the CND that goes from Bourne goes to the CMAS incinerator. That ash is then transported back to Bourne. The expansion of the Bourne landfill is going to be solely used for that ash. So you're still going to be trucking trash off the Cape. The problem is, where do you truck it to? In this study, it says that trucking it to Canton is not the answer, because it's too cost prohibitive. You're gonna be putting all these trucks on the road, you're gonna be taking trucks away from doing their routes, you're gonna have to increase the number of drivers you have. It's just not financially feasible for any company to do that. I mean, right now, we used NOSET disposal for our job site waste disposal, and they took over the town. So we've had several changes in just town waste disposal companies. We had to fire them because they couldn't keep up with the demand for taking care of our job sites, and the reason they kept giving was, we don't have drivers. So this is something that's coming in the future. Going back to when we were writing the low comprehensive plan, Ray Jack was emphatic about the only cheapest, most environmentally friendly way to dispose of solid waste is to take, put it in trains and take it to Ohio and Virginia and other places where they have sites that are built to take care of this. One train car takes five truckloads of trash. So you're gonna be taking five trucks and driving them over for every train car. And they're looking at increasing the number of train cars every year. So we're then looking at increasing the number of truck runs. It's just not feasible.
So perhaps, you've got a lot of statements that you've made, Mr. Leary, and I apologize for interrupting, but I'm, you know, I would like to address each of them with facts. So fact, today, based on information from, filed by the company that takes the construction debris on the train, information filed by them with the board of the regional organization, it's 3.26 trucks a day. That is the current volume. It is not...and it's one trash train, excuse me, one construction debris train a week. So that is the current volume, and that's what the Board of Directors of the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Facility reported. Furthermore, the state also has mandates to reduce trash, something that we all struggle with. Mr. Robinson made the point in an editorial in The Enterprise last week about what one banana peel recycled a day could mean. And not to be flippant, but we're talking about three trucks a day, and we're talking about low-cost, multimodal transportation that is a fraction of the carbon of car transportation and a fraction of the cost. That's what bicycles and walking are.
Yeah, if I could just add to this, I don't know to what extent we should be taking up the board's time with this conversation, given the question of who's got appropriate jurisdiction over this, but I did want to point out that, you know, we are only talking about the removal of one six-mile length of track. The truth is, to the extent, as you say, Mr. Leary, that there's going to be a need in the future for disposal of trash by, to other places like Ohio, there's nothing to prevent that going by train once it's over the canal and off the Cape. So we're really talking about a relatively minor increase in truckloads. We're not talking about any increase in Falmouth, where the trucks are now used now even with the track, because the debris has to be taken to the transfer station. And currently, we're only talking about a private operator's disposal of construction debris. We're not talking about any of the four Upper Cape Town's municipal trash disposal, because the town of Falmouth takes their disposal, their trash, to the ice swim facility in Bourne, which has indicated that they have plenty of capacity. And I don't know whether or not your information about their expansion is quite accurate, but they have capacity for quite some time to come. And in the end, of course...
Over 30s.
Beg your pardon?
Through the 30s.
Well, if that's accurate with the expansions, at some point, we're gonna have to face the fact that disposal of trash has to happen some other way than taking it to a different state. And again, in the end, this is really a measuring of public interest. And the argument that we've been making, we continue to make, is that the public interest in having an extension of the Shining Sea Bike Way will far exceed the public interest in maintaining, subsidizing a track that serves currently to private operators.
Thank you.
But see, I would...
Bob, excuse me. I'd like to address the question you started out with of jurisdiction. Our interest in this is strictly in the context of long-range comprehensive planning. This forum isn't about that. So I realize maybe some other people have come to discuss this issue, and I don't want to cut it off prematurely, as long as you've made that effort. It's obviously of interest to people, but let's put some boundaries around it. Right now, we've given it about over 10 minutes, so let's go till 10 o'clock, and then we'll say that's enough. It's really not what we're gathered for, but here you are. So by 10 o'clock.
How does one side get 10 minutes to speak and the other side get seven? I'd like the same amount of time that they get to speak.
Let's try it at 10 o'clock and see if you've had your say. So thank you, and we'll give some others a chance to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Carl Cabosa. I'm the current Li C at the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station. This group is here to remove the tracks. Make no mistake about it, if they wanted to build a bike path, the bike path could be built today from the canal right down to Falmouth, going through the northbound lanes, which have never been built, on Route 28, connecting the canal to our national cemetery, to the Upper Cape Regional High School, to the Mashpee High School, to the Crane Wildlife Area, to the Mashpee Bike Path, and to the Falmouth Bike Path, for half the money that they have currently. Then, they could use the money that they got, the 20 million, to cross 28 in several locations to add smaller bike paths to the beach, like we did here in Falmouth in the Goodwill Park. We crossed 28, we made a nice bike path over to the water, to the park, to tie in those assets with the bike path. That's not what they're about. They want to remove the rail. So a couple things I want everybody on this board to understand. I think, Patricia, I think you were here when this was discussed before. I'm not sure any other board members were. When the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station was in, under the control of the town of Falmouth, and the town of Falmouth managed it, we were moving MSW from that transfer station up to CMAS. It was a very short run. The usefulness of that transfer station was not the actual daily use. The usefulness of the transfer station that Ray Jack so eloquently talked about was 10 years from now, 15 years from now. We need the rail and the transfer station as an asset for this community, because the town of Bourne shot this community, the town of Mashpee, and the town of Sandwich out of the Bourne landfill. They privatized it and sold it to a private company. Now, Bob talked about, hey, the town of Falmouth does bring its trash to the Bourne landfill. It's residential trash, but not one pound of commercial trash goes into that landfill. It's not allowed. So when you go down the street and you stop at La Cucina or any of these restaurants or bookstore, none of that waste is accepted at the Bourne landfill. So there's two things at play here. When these people talk about, oh, it helps a private business. Oh, it helps every business on Cape Cod. And it helps our community, because in the end, waste disposal affects everybody. You don't buy a hamburger at La Cucina without them throwing something away. And the cost of that disposal, I mean, we can laugh, but the Bourne landfill, they were $25 a ton not that long ago. It's $135 a ton now, and we have the most expensive waste disposal in the country next to Hawaii and Nantucket.
Mr. Cabosa, thank you. That's all new information to me. Is there anyone else who would like to speak now?
I've got a lot more that I'd like to rebut, and they had plenty of time to speak about. I think this issue is very important for this planning board to get their arms around. And I understand you're all intelligent people. The problem is, you don't have the history and the facts of being portrayed from one side that are not accurate at all.
At the point that this comes up as a topic for long-range planning, there'll be ample time to learn all that we need to know, we realize better than we did before, our own ignorance, so...
Okay, I just want to state one more thing. They quoted some numbers of trucks, and I want these folks to...I want the folks here to understand it, and I want the people at home to understand it. Each rail car contains 100 tons of waste. The average rail car, the average truck that comes into the transfer station, contains 2.5 tons. That's 46 trucks per rail car. When Mr. Podersky takes a rail car off the property, he takes 10 at a time. That's 460 trucks going over the bridge, not three.
Charlotte, may I make a...
Yes, please.
Carl, I would like to suggest that you write your comments up that you were not able to express and send them in. We've got a huge packet full of information. I would appreciate having that. We're information gathering.
I really appreciate your time, and I'm sorry I'm frustrated. It's just, I've been through this presentation several times, and every time I try to correct it and it gets straightened out, it...they like to take the facts that they like to use and portray them. I fill those rail cars. I know what goes in them. Okay? If you want to know what comes in them, ask. I'd love to give you a tour of the transfer station, what we're doing. The other thing that's very important to our community, 25% of the materials that come into our transfer station are recycled. Some of them recycled right here in Cape Cod.
Thank you. We are out of the amount of time that I think that we really ought to give this tonight.
Just one more.
One more?
Yeah.
Will it be brief, please?
Five minutes. Four minutes. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Chris Podersky. You instructed anybody who wanted to come up to come up and announce themselves, and I don't want to drag anything out, but I think it's important. I had sent you folks a document late this afternoon after I had typed it up and sent it to you.
Right, we've just received it and had a chance to read it just before the meeting.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that.
Yeah.
So I think you hit on something pretty accurate. When you talked about planning for the future, that's exactly...I was on the planet of Wincanton for 12 years, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. Would you like...I submitted a letter to you. I'll be happy to read it for the record, or if you want to just commit it to the record, that's fine. Whatever you prefer. I can read through it real quick.
If you could just summarize some of your comments, that would be good.
Dear Chairperson Harris, Mass Coastal Railroad, we operate 100 miles of railroad in Massachusetts. We're custodians of another 44. We're in business to move...we're in business to move freight, trash, whatever materials we are, we have to move by federal law. The paralyzing traffic and the ever-growth issues of the climate on Cape Cod, you've seen the studies. Cape Cod Commission, who has all of your interests at heart, including the taxpayers, the people at large, the conservation side of things, they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on studies in the past 20 years. The resolution at the end of it is just that. Don't put the trash on Cape Cod. That landfill on Bourne, every ton of trash that goes in that landfill is a crime. We all talk about your aquifer and the important water and everything else. Really? It does benefit the town of Bourne, because the town of Bourne's financial existence revolves around that landfill, period. That's why it's there, that's why that's a big, significant piece of their tax base. And Mr. Cabosa spoke eloquently when he mentioned that Covanta had pulled a...and it's not...it's actually a terrific idea. They bought the capacity of the Bourne landfill for the purposes of the MSW, going to Covanta, being burned, the bottom ash that's got no value to it goes into the landfill, done. It does have a finite...it does have a finite life, and it's not 85%, it's 92% of their capacity. So, you know, with that, I do ask that this letter be made a record of this proceeding.
So noted.
Do you have any questions? I'd be happy to...the tonnages and all that, we move it. I could tell you that each car weighs anywheres between 250,000 to 280,000 pounds apiece, no matter whatever these other people are joking about.
I think we all have more questions than we started with.
I have a question. Charlotte, I do have a question in regards to your letter.
Yes, ma'am.
You say here, abandoned rail corridors are perfect uses for passive recreation bike paths.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. But you say that the national network is governed by federal law, but protected by the U.S. Surface Transportation Board.
Yes, ma'am. So once a state or railroad or other entity, such as all the rail lines that went south of Yarmouth down to Toro and Provincetown, those right-of-ways were abandoned. They were formally abandoned, it's through Congress and it's through an act of the Surface Transportation Board. In the late 1950s, they decided it was no longer viable to be carrying people on the railroads down, and they took the tracks up. They filed abandonment, abandonment, and it's gone. Same thing has happened all throughout New England, all throughout the United States. Places that no longer determined to be the dense rail network that was once needed, they decided it was...they didn't need them anymore. So once they're abandoned, perfect use. There's rail lines that go all through New England, all through Canada, that are on abandoned right-of-ways. This is certainly not an abandoned right-of...
That's what I was pointing out.
And my point is, take that just one step further. There is a lot of process that has to happen to ever even consider an abandonment of that rail line. Its process, it could take 10 to 12 years to even think about that happening. And you have a railroad operator in the state of Massachusetts and the United States Army that will completely oppose it.
Okay, I'd like the cooperation of everybody here now. This is not...this has gone much longer and further than it should.
You've got 10 minutes.
Just a moment. This is disorderly, so please, we're not going to have any further discussion on this. This is the wrong forum for this.
Thank you for your time.
I think what you have all emphasized is that this is a conversation that needs to happen, but this is the wrong forum for it, so that your expertise, your preparation can be better used in another way. I think what it's pointed out to us is that the Cape Cod Commission is requiring municipalities on the Cape, they are our regional sort of overlords, to redo their long-range comprehensive plan in a format that corresponds to theirs. That's what they want. They said so some four years ago. We have gone through a change in town planners and other things. We're taking precedence, and it's time that we started paying attention to that and need to know that this issue should be moved up, because we do subject by subject in an orderly way. So that this issue really should come somewhere near the top of that list, but probably after housing and a few others. So we've learned that, but I think this is enough on this for tonight. Really, it's just not the best use of your time and thought, so thank you.
Madam Chairman, could I just say one thing, please? We want this conversation to be civil. We've been civil, and I would ask Mr. Cabosa and Mr. Podersky if they could also start taking a civil tone instead of referring to us as these people. We're all citizens, we're all interested in the right thing happening, and frankly, that's an offensive way for you guys to engage in a conversation. So I'd ask you to start being more civil.
That's my livelihood, that's how I make a living.
Anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
I want this planning board to understand the last thing. I'm a citizen of the town of Falmouth, a resident. I own land on the rail. I will be filing a lawsuit against the planning board and him personally if this rail is removed. The Surface Transportation Act is very clear, is very clear. The current use of the railroad has rights. They can't just go take them away.
Actually, I know who you are. You've done work at my house, and it's still working, so I'm aware of all that. We're all here. We're all townspeople, we all care a lot. We care also that we are using the right forums for our concerns, and this is just off-base. At the point that we convene to do long-range planning, you'll all be invited back, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your tone. Thank you.
Thank you for your caring. Next on our agenda for tonight. Tonight we have a decision that we had closed the hearing on our applicant, who is Sean Wade, Site Plan Review Application of Construction of Tax Accessory Apartment at 12 Barrows Road in East Falmouth. And we have a draft decision as we requested it, and Bob, could you read that?
Trying to put all my stuff away here.
Here, do you want it?
Would you like me to do?
The draft for...to approve the application of Sean Wade... The draft for, to approve the application of Sean Wade?
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Sean Wade for the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit to be located in the basement of the primary dwelling on the fourth forty-six thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-three square foot lot located at twelve Barrows Road under section two forty, twelve point two, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Following findings, the applicant seeks to construct, oh, that's not approved. The applicant shows a two-car garage as well as a paved driveway which complies with section two forty-six one B and section two forty fourteen one E of the zoning bylaw respectively. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to section two forty-six one B of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, the plant shall be constructed as approved. Either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. Either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building commission assigned by the property owner. Construction activities shall not cause erosion or sedimentation into the abutting properties in town right of way. The project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code. The applicant shall contact the engineering division for address assignment prior to issuance of an occupancy permit.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's, let's vote. John?
Hi.
We'll start with Pam next time.
Oh, yeah, I should.
Bob, yes.
Jim, yes.
Charlotte, yes?
Pat, yes.
Paul, how do you vote?
I'm listening.
I'm sorry, I'm listening.
Oh. Say yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
And Pam, Pam, how do you vote?
Pam?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's approved, so this is a good project. It was well-prepared, and now it can go forward. Thank you. We, we have that. And we have the entire motion part of the record. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have, we had a public hearing open to hear about the zoning articles that we're sending to town meeting in November. And at our last meeting, Jed did a presentation to explain them. There were two of them, Article One and Article Two. Article One is about correcting errors and omissions. Article Two is about relocating the accessory apartment bylaw. If there's no further comment or discussion, none from the public. Any further discussion here? Paul?
I thought the presentation was excellent last time. I have nothing to add to it.
It was excellent. It was very thorough. Any other comment?
No, I agree with Paul.
Okay, one particular thing, then we can go ahead and close the, the hearing. So, all in favor of closing the hearing? Pam, we'll start with you. Pam, surprise, we're beginning with you.
Aye.
Thank you. Pam votes yes. Paul?
Yeah. No, she's far away. She's in North Falmouth. It takes a while for it to transmit back.
It does, it does.
Aye.
Pat, aye.
Charlotte, aye?
Jim, aye.
Bob, aye.
John, aye.
And the motion passes. And you realize that Jed made that really great presentation. The, one of the town councils came up with a really great idea as far as the presentation at town meeting. These are really very technical kinds of things, and they're difficult to take in even from a great presentation. So what he suggested is that in the meeting booklet that all the town meeting members get, that the changes, we're used to the blue and black, the changes will be in red. So that any town meeting member can flip through in their book and see immediately what's changing. And it should make it faster and easier to see that these are minor technical changes and that we're not changing the accessory apartment bylaw in any substantial way. We're just moving its presentation to make it more useful within the booklet. We're hoping that that's the effect on it.
Want a motion?
Um, yeah, we need a motion now.
I move that the planning board recommend Article One on correcting errors and omissions to the warrant as printed.
Uh, let me see.
Madam Chair, it's just for the board's knowledge, it's Article Nine officially.
Yeah, it's, it's actually.
Okay, so this is Article.
Can we redo it? It's right here.
Oh, Article Nine, okay. Sorry about that.
Technical corrections and accessory apartments.
I don't have that.
I just handed it to you.
Oh, you want the explanation as well, because we normally just say we move it as printed.
Just to read it correctly that it's Article Nine?
Okay, that the town vote Article Nine as printed.
Second.
And it's seconded, so now we're, we're going to vote on that motion to bring our two articles to, to town meeting. Pam, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Paul?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Charlotte, aye. Jim?
Aye.
Bob, aye.
John, aye.
And it passes. Good.
Okay, and this next one is Article Ten then?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay. I move that the planning board recommend Article Ten relocating the accessory apartment bylaw to the warrant as printed.
Second.
Discussion? None. Once again, all in favor. Pam?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Pat? Pat, aye.
Jim, aye.
Bob, aye.
John, aye.
Charlotte, aye, and it passes. Good, so we're ready for town meeting. We've had the hearings that we need to have. Now all we have to do is be there and hope that the town and town meeting members understand and they vote positively in the direction that we're hoping. Okay, next for us. A discussion on eighteen Owls Nest ADU barn structure. I think someone was going to be here there. Oh, great. It's your turn.
So, the homeowner's here, and they are planning on doing a detached accessory apartment. They have not applied yet because they don't want to spend the money to, on all the plans and design plans if you're not going to allow what they have in mind. It's a little different. It doesn't look like their main house, so they're going to just go through it with you, what their plan is, before they spend the money.
Okay, and we had talked about having a process like this that would make it easier, and it will appear on our agenda looking like a discussion item, so we don't either open it or close it or vote or approve, but we can indicate our reaction. Yeah, it's a nice process. Okay, please go, please introduce yourself.
Hello, yes, Madam Chairperson and members of the board, I'm Kate Smith, homeowner, resident of Falmouth here at eighteen Owls Nest Road, hoping to build an ADU detached building on my property for my parents', one-storey living, one-story living. My concern or just hesitation before going through with plans was that I read in the bylaws that the attached, if it's detached, it has to look comparable to your main house. I was having trouble designing it like my main house. You see the front facade. It's not dissimilar, but it's not exactly like it. So that's the side elevation, that's the rear elevation. It's very typical Cape Cod-looking. On the lot where you just saw the main property in here, I'm looking to put the accessory unit over here and then a shed that will also be in the same liking, likeness to the accessory dwelling unit. These are the inspiration photos for the accessory dwelling unit that would fall within the square foot parameters. You see how it's different than my, my main house, that it has this shed dormer on the, on the front roof, and it also has a porch. My question to the board, this is just an inspiration photo. These are some of the side photos. And then I have a floor plan sketched out. I have a drafter ready to design the plans. My question, I guess my question to the board is, after reading the bylaws saying that it's supposed to look similar, is this something that would be rejected because it doesn't look, because this elevation doesn't look like the front elevation for the house? So really looking at something similar in kind to this with a storage unit to the side and the existing unit looking like so. I, I had understood that prior bylaws said that if it's detached, a barn look is acceptable. I guess I'm trying to get a feel, a discussion from the board of what the intent is for a detached accessory dwelling unit if I would be able to proceed with a different aesthetic.
Okay, let's hear what the board thinks.
Excellent, thank you.
When we talked about something being similar, we were looking at places that would have an old barn and that being converted. So if it was existing with the existing primary dwelling, then yeah, that wouldn't be, so even if it was different design and style from a house, that would be acceptable. Typically, we get into roof pitches, siding, roofing, windows, those types of things. I don't know what the board thinks about the porch. I mean, I, I think this is great. I'd like to build one like this myself.
Well, I guess that's an excellent question, Rob, because my existing siding is a traditional cedar shake, which I have no intention of, of changing, but the new structure and, and also the shed that would kind of match it was looking for more of a board and batten look.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You could achieve the bylaw by using the same windows and siding and roof pitch, and the only difference would be the porch. So you're definitely choosing to do it away from the bylaw. You want to do a wholly different thing. But you could have the exact same size structure with, all you have to do is to do the windows and siding, it'd be the same. But your, your preference is to make it look different, which is, that's what you want.
Right, well, because it's a smaller unit, floor plan, having a little bit bigger windows that go down towards the floor on the front is part of, and they're really primarily only going to have the front side of that house for windows because the backside in order to fit the square foot has to be walls to the bathroom and the bedroom. So I was hoping to get bigger windows to maximize the light that it would have.
I think bigger windows are fine. I, I think the roof line's fine. I'm not really opposed to making it, changing our bylaw and allow it to be something different and have it like two things totally different, but that's not what we approved in the beginning. So, I think she could get what she wanted just by having bigger windows and siding and, and the same trim as the house and have everything work.
Same muttons and.
Right.
You know, the same like twelve over, six over sixes or whatever the other windows are.
Right, you're talking about the grills inside the light, yep.
Double hungs, yeah, the grills.
Yeah.
It's typical that a lot of houses on the Cape have different siding on the front and other siding treatments on the back and the sides. I know we do clabwood in the front of our houses with shingles around the back. There's a house in my neighborhood that has clabwood in the front and text to one-eleven for the siding on the sides and the back.
Our house actually did indeed have clapboard when we first saw it, had clapboard on the front.
Yeah. So, I don't know how the board would feel if they would feel that that's too much of a change to just have the front shingle and the rest of it.
Well, let's do with the other rest of the board things. Pat?
I would prefer shingles to blend in better with the house. I could care less about the shed if you want to do that, but my preference would be to have the, the living unit with the cedar shingles. I don't mind the larger windows. I think it's advisable.
Well?
Yeah, I kind of agree. I like the cedar shingles, but I think it's a lovely house, and I think it's a good concept. Very pretty.
I personally think it's beautiful. I don't see why we shouldn't allow it. A board and batten is, is the new style for a lot of homes today. And if you took a primary residence and added a little porch to that, they would look very similar. I, I think if, if the board wants cedar shingles maybe just on the front of the, of the dwelling, the other three sides could be whatever she wants because they're not going to, not going to see it from the street. But I think the board and batten and the.
Can you hear him?
I can, yes, thank you.
I think the board and batten and the farmer's porch is fine. It's just, and it sits way back from the road.
That's true.
It is very far back from the road.
Way back from the road. I, I don't see any issues with it at all.
So I'll rescind my comment then, okay?
My only point is I would like to see some effort to at least recognize the design.
It happens that I, I'm falling on the same side that you did. This, this really is a very much of a cha, I think it's adorable. I ask, I can see why you love it, but it is very, very different, and that is not the bylaw.
You set the precedent with the very first one.
To make it appear to be strongly related. And suggestions have been made on how you could do that and still have the same porch, the same feel, but rather than looking southern, it would look Cape Cod.
Can I add something? I had a, one idea, which was this section of the garage over here does have to get reshingled. And I had an idea that when I do it, and it could be at the same time as the barn and the accessory dwelling unit, but the top peak of this would be done in the clapboard, so it would match and be in liking to the accessory dwelling unit.
So you're talking.
What you come back with is.
Clapboard, board and batten on the, on the front of my garage that would match the accessory dwelling unit. I don't know if that's the idea.
What you mean by clapboard, board and batten, I.
Oh, I, so I, um.
I'm confused by that term.
Vertical.
Because I'd very much be in favor of clapboard, but that, not that, yeah, okay.
Not that, right.
Okay. And by clapboard, it's just horizontal.
No, she can change her house to match it, to get around the bylaw, and that's what's going on. I guess that could be done.
And that's very common. A lot, a lot of new homes today, they're doing just what she's doing here.
Oh, I know.
They're doing board and batten on one of the, one of the gables.
Gables, yeah.
That's true, but I don't want to lose the sense of the bylaw, that it's going to look like one property under one owner. It's not going to suddenly look like two houses on one lot. That's what we're trying to avoid. And we're trying to, this is just advisory. You can come back with your reaction and what you want to do, and we'll look at that again. But I think you've, you've heard what we've all said, except for Pam. Pam, do you have the pictures? Hello?
Out to ten.
She's listening. Pam?
Hello?
Pam, yeah, do you have an opinion here you want to share?
Yes, I do. I, you know, I've having, having built a huge addition onto our house prior to moving here for my parents. I clearly would love to see, you know, other families do the same thing to provide for their seniors to be close to the family. And I don't think, I mean, I liked the idea of the board batten on the original dwelling to match what the plan was for the accessory building. And I think if they, if they did that and just put some shingles on the accessory building, I think you could blend in beautifully.
So make the two of them appear to go together. Brian?
Yeah, see, Charlotte's, Charlotte's point is that it shouldn't look like two, like somebody subdivided your property. There's two, two separate houses on it. It shouldn't look like it was just something that was converted at a later date.
So it might be advisable that when I submit my plans and I have to put exterior pictures of my house, I can also put plans to redo the garage so that it looks similar to the accessory dwelling, so it appears.
That would be one way. The simpler way would be just shingle the front of your accessory dwelling. But up to you. So, what interests me is I think it, it sort of, this system worked, that you could come here, you could get an advisory opinion just to see how it goes, because the rest of it's fine.
I appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Can I just ask one question, just so she has a little more clarity when she comes back? What about, you're, you're all set with the, the dormer that she likes and the porch, just to clarify? Now, in this, one of the pictures, you had shutters on the window, but not in your drawing, so I didn't know if you were. Your house doesn't have shutters, so I was just making sure that you weren't going to propose shutters on the front windows of the accessory dwelling unit.
I think I just hadn't got to the point of drawing it. I didn't realize that that would be. There are shutters on my existing home.
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
I don't see them in this picture.
There were. Nope, there are not. I took them off.
So that would need probably be a match.
Like whichever it was.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So that's, I just wanted that clarification, so when it comes time for her to, you know, make all those little details that are all set.
I appreciate your time.
I would also make sure that we are discussing that you really can't see this from the front of the house, and that's another thing we need to take into consideration.
Right.
Because if somebody wanted to put this right next to it, and that would be a totally different structure, I'd feel a little bit harder about what they're doing as opposed to this is in the rear, and we'd have to walk around the backyard to see it.
Right.
It's like Jerry Pecrotz said about the one next to me. Oh, it's in Hatchville.
Wow.
Yeah.
That was insensitive. You know where you could see something sort of like this, right at the corner, near the corner of one fifty-one and twenty-eight A in North Falmouth, there is a building that went up in the last two years. there is a building that went up in the last two years. And we're all wondering as we drove by, what is that? What is that? Is that a barn? What is it? No, it turns out it's a house. And next to it is a garage, and they have different materials on them. We just drive by and take a look at it.
Right across from the beach house, or Bucatino's, yeah.
Yes, Bucatino's, that one.
Familiar with it.
Right. And they're both well done, so this is not a shoddy job that they've done. But they are very different, so take a look.
Okay. I guess my question for next steps is when I put my proposal through, that it'll get evaluated again by the planning board and then this decision on whether it's acceptable or not.
Then you go before the zoning board because it's detached.
Correct, yes. So thanks, Jimmy, for your move there, sorry.
Nope, you're all set.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're very welcome, and thank you for allowing us to do it this way.
Thank you. Thank you for having an exciting before meeting.
It was a little. Okay, next, we now have committee reports.
The only thing I want to report is as read in the Falmouth Enterprise, the bids on improvements to the ways for the treatment plan came under budget. So they should be able to award that contract later this year for the time period of 24 to 30 months. So that's very good news.
That is good news. Anything on housing? No?
I'll give a report on CPC. We had a meeting two weeks ago. We're vetting new applications. And I missed the meeting because I was on COVID watch, which fortunately I didn't have COVID, but I don't want to take a chance. So we have a meeting Thursday evening. And applicants this year are for the refill, reuse Water Stewart project. And we also have an applicant from the town for Trotting Park Pickleball Courts at 545 Gifford Street. They're requesting $2.6 million for pickleball courts.
And where is that on Gifford?
I think it's where the baseball field is, that complex there.
They're on housing?
Little League and skate park and etc. I'm pretty sure that's where it's at.
I think there's a commercial building there, a sort of a storage facility there, but there aren't houses there.
No, there's no housing there. The town owns the property. And then there's a rehabilitation of the skating park at the same location. And then the Falmouth Congregational Church under Historic is seeking some money for steeple rehabilitation. So that's the applicants that we've received for this year.
Ah, sounds interesting.
I could tell you more, but I wasn't at the meeting, unfortunately.
That's how... I don't know if you're familiar with it, but that's how the big white steepled church in Brewster got rehabbed.
Yeah.
Was what their community preserves, or at least most of it.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Any others? Planning Department report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three items to report. So tomorrow, no, let's see, Thursday night, I will be before the Finance Committee talking about and advocating for our capital requests, the Planning Department. So we have three capital requests. We are asking for $15,000 to finish up our open space and recreation plan. So the last element of that would be doing an ADA transition plan that's required by the state for approval of that plan, and then also the final deliverable. And the second item is a wayfinding plan. So we're asking for $20,000 to support that effort, to work with the Cape Cod Commission to study the downtown area, do a sign inventory, and then provide some recommendations after a public engagement program to put in some new wayfinding. Connect the bike path with the downtown. Give people who, you know, come to the community in the summer months an indication once they get out of their car where, you know, the downtown area is, where their shops exist, etc. So we're asking for $20,000 for that. And the last item is, of course, our recodification effort. So we're asking for another $30,000 to continue that effort moving forward. We've got a lot to do, so it's going to be important that we have that funding. So again, I'll be in front of the Finance Committee answering any questions they might have.
We need to find a new way to name that because it's not recodification anymore, really.
Yeah, it's like a zoning bylaw review.
Yeah, something, updates, whatever.
Yeah. Second... Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you mentioned wayfinding. Is that going to be a consultant to do that or a person to be hired to do that?
It will be the Cape Cod Commission.
Cape Cod Commission. As you're well aware, the Transportation Committees spent a lot of time talking about wayfinding and particularly directing heavy vehicles off Main Street, Lakeview Avenue, and others. I mean, I sat in my office this afternoon and I counted about 10 dump trucks and other heavy equipment going by, even though the signs that say no through Turkey. So the wayfinding would perhaps help direct them to the areas where they're supposed to be.
Right.
It's a big issue.
And I know that the Transportation Committee was also focused on connecting the bike path with the downtown. Lots of folks, I mean, we just heard about the popularity of the bike path and connecting those folks to the downtown area, indicating, hey, you know, there's places to shop, eat, recreate, etc.
As a matter of fact, that was recognized as an important connector by 30 years ago in a report that was written. That connection was so important. And for some reason, the priority shifted to Goodwill Park. And I assume they're waiting for the improvements to Kathleen Bates to continue that, which is under design as I understand it.
It is, yes. I think Paul's referring to the crossing on 28 at Kathleen Bates.
Right. That light is not very often read, fortunately.
There isn't a light there.
You're talking about the other one.
At Gifford?
Oh, different one.
Yeah.
Say it again then where it is. That's where I was picturing it.
Katie Bates, 28.
Down by you.
So another connection across 28 to the bike path, which would connect ultimately.
So they're talking about a light there at Kathleen Bates and Palmer Avenue?
I don't know if it's a light.
Lit crosswalk, flashing crosswalk?
Some sort of enhanced pedestrian bicycle crossing. I think that's still currently being designed.
I don't like the one that they just put in because it's up so high. I like the one that where it crosses Locust Street and Litts Road because you can see it better.
You can see it better.
Yeah. I mean, sometimes you're behind some truck and you can't see above it. Yeah, I'm not really liking that one.
No, I'm not liking that either. Plus, the access to it is downhill.
Yeah.
I'm really concerned as the board was when we voted on that, that somebody's going to get hurt or killed there.
We thought it was going to be like the... Similar to the other one.
Yeah.
Keep in mind the one that Mill Road is really good from one direction because it's flat and it's downhill from the other, and that's the dangerous side. I've almost been killed there.
I know.
By one car stopping and a motorcycle not seeing it, slaying them down sideways and going right by the truck, and I had to run and get in front of the car.
That... You're talking about vehicles coming downhill, yeah. I'm talking about cyclists coming downhill.
Oh, you're talking about cyclists. Oh, they have to shoot down and stop right.
And there's no curve that I think should have been put there to slow them down before they have to push the light to get across there.
You're talking about traffic on the bike path, yeah.
Yeah, being downhill.
Not traffic on the road, yeah, to slow the bikes down.
Well, yeah.
It's kind of interesting. I travel that quite a bit. Every time I come by Kathleen Bates Crossing, I stop for a bike. I have never seen anyone on that bike trail to Goodwill Park. Maybe it's people going to work in the morning, I don't know. But I've never seen anyone on that bike crossing.
Nor have I, Paul.
Yeah, twice I've seen them.
Once.
You?
I think they're trying to... I think the big reason, no one really knows about it. It's a brand-new connection.
Yeah.
Across connection. They've been trying to get to the other side of town, and that's the route to do it, but I don't think people have the habit of going that way yet.
Well, it's for the people who are further east.
Yeah.
To cut through Goodwill Park, not to get people to go downtown.
Downtown, right.
And the priority was downtown.
Other committee reports? Are there any?
I have two more items.
Oh, excuse me.
It's okay. The Housing Production Plan, the Planning Department's working closely with our Housing Coordinator on that. So we just received a civic engagement program from our consultants, so we're excited about that. But that's getting underway, as I described before. And I just want to continue to bring that up because it is an important topic that we'll be working on. Likely what we'll do is we'll have the consultants or perhaps just the Housing Coordinator and myself engage with the Planning Board about what we're doing and how we're doing it and sort of spell it out to introduce the topic to not only the board, but also to the public so that we can wrap this whole thing up by early next year.
That would be good to hear from them.
Yeah.
You know, they're part of your department, aren't they?
They are, yes.
Right.
And by "they," she is, yes.
She, yes. Your website needs an update because they're not listed there. And the legal department website, they're not, needs an update also because he's no longer new. He's been there now at least a year, I think, the council.
Okay.
And his name isn't there. So I understand they're overworked down there in the IT department, but the websites are falling out of date.
We'll take a closer look.
Yeah, that'd be good because when you forget a name, you look it up and it's not there.
Sure.
Do you have a question?
Yes. The HPP, that's supposed to be redone every five years, or am I wrong?
That's right, every five years.
Updated every five years, okay.
Open space plan is every seven years. Housing production plan is every five years.
Okay.
I have a question. Just has there been any progress? Or has the code of Falmouth been updated through the town clerk with the most recent bylaw? Has the table of contents, I mean, the use table been put online?
Not yet. In fact, they did contact me just this week with some suggested edits and potential ways to approach it, and so we've been communicating. I don't know what the timeline is for their...
Isn't the bylaw that supposed to happen in like 60 days?
It's a monumental effort, I believe, on their effort, on their side. So they are working on it and they should have it done soon. But as we showed you before, the current bylaw is right up at top on the town code. So when you go to the town code, it's right up at top, and you just click on that and it goes right to the current bylaw. But it'll be done soon.
Can I ask a question?
Well, sure.
The edits you're talking about, are they significant or are they formatted?
It's a lot of formatting, as you know.
Mostly formatting, not content.
Correct. The E-code was just pages of just paragraphs of text. And now they have to create tables and change all that formatting, so.
But that is happening. That's exactly what I'm talking, the E-code.
Yes, it is happening, yes.
Thank you.
And then last item, this is an item near to dear to Jim's heart here. We are going to be bringing forward some potential edits for the board to consider on your rules and regulations.
Oh, good.
So that's not only your special permit subdivision, but we were talking about Chapter 300. So when things start to calm down a bit with after-town meeting, we figured that might be a good time to bring those items forward to a public hearing. So stay tuned. We'll have those things coming forward soon.
And you'll be working... Get input from Jim as you go?
Yes, we will.
And from anyone else who has some on that same topic? That's it from planning right now?
So far.
A general correspondence. We received it right, I think, at the beginning of the meeting and then had it abbreviated and now entered into the record. That's it for that. And I really appreciate the future agenda items. You're putting the things that you know as well as just asking us what we would like.
Right.
However, we will still tell you what we would like. If you don't mind. Two things. One, you know, periodically I do ask you about our long-range comprehensive plan, which we were supposed to have started on updating a few years ago. And I wonder if at our next meeting, we couldn't get, I hope, more than a report, some sort of tentative timeline on when that might start.
Okay.
That would be really good to know. And I have another issue that I at least haven't raised before, and that's about signage. I'll tell you how it came up. A sign appeared at the corner of my street. I live in a residential area. It is... My street is in Zone Residential B. And you're not supposed to have commercial operations in those areas. There is a commercial operation according to the sign that has been placed on the corner lot. There is a short-term rental commerce going on in that house. And they have put up a sign that they intend to have be permanent. So one, I think it's wrong for the zoning. But two, I really wonder at the sign being allowed to be permanent. And I say allowed because I went first to find out, well, who do you talk to about signs? You talk to an individual within the Building Commissioner's office. I don't know if any of you have tried this. You go to see a person and very polite, very nice. They will get back to you, they will look it up, they get back to me, they look it up. Oh, yeah, they're allowed to do that. Go, well, where's the rule on that? Not sure. So one, what are the rules?
Is it a real estate sign?
Yes, it is.
There's a section of the bylaws that specifically covers real estate signs.
This is a permanent rental sign. Doesn't say it's for sale.
So it's for rent?
Short-term rent. They're renting it by the weekend or the week.
Well, there are signs for... There is a bylaw on the size for both for rent and for sale. I don't know about permanent, but would if you always have a vacancy, a sign can stay there? That's kind of a...
I think it's an issue. So I'm asking for an agenda item.
So you... Really what you're saying is you don't want them to be short-term rentals. You're going to make them be year-round. Because if they are short-term rentals and they're rented by the month or the week, they would have to have a sign up all the time.
I have recently learned my lesson. What I'm asking for is more information.
Okay.
To look into this.
Yeah, I mean, it's more about the sign. It's not about what they're doing.
I agree. Maybe we should...
The sign started it.
Well, if we're going to do signs, there's a lot of other issues on signs.
Good, we're going to do signs.
Okay, I'll give you a couple other examples of the same thing. As realtors, we're limited to a sign for a rent, a specific size. I think it's a amount of square feet. Okay, it has to be like three, two by three. It's a maximum sign.
This is shaped like a sail on a boat.
Well, I want to tell you that it's been totally ignored because all the commercial operations put up huge banners that are five feet by four feet, and they've been up for three years. They have them at the mall, they have them at Friendly's. They're all over town. And whenever I've gone to put up a sign, because I'm a local guy, in the past I've been told it has to be a certain size and I can't use the big ones. But for some reason, the out-of-town companies come in and put up these giant banners.
Look at some of the local construction companies and the signs that they put up.
Construction signs different. There's a bylaw for construction. I'm talking about for rent and for lease. It's a specific part of the bylaw.
So we have a concern with the rules and we have a concern with implementation.
And then there's one other thing too. I'll bring it up. We're talking about signs. The bylaw in that same section that we're talking about, that are really rules and not really bylaws, is the A-frame sign. It's the sign... They are actually prohibited in our town unless the product you are selling has a shelf life of like 24 hours or 48 hours that you could put up if you're selling food. And you could put up... They are unallowed, these A-frames. Bylaw are unallowed, and they're gone everywhere all the time. And I use them too because everybody else is using them. But those are bylaws that have just totally been ignored. And if we're doing signs, we might as well see if we want to get rid of those old-fashioned bylaws or incorporate them.
Because I know my husband has been getting those for years, for Spore Gardens, for Rotary Club, for their events.
I think charities are different.
Oh.
I'm talking about store signs, the bylaw's specific. It has to be for food, something that has a life cycle, a certain time on it. But now everybody does it, and so do I, because everybody else is using it.
I think it's important, if I may, just to point out that the signs are not under your jurisdiction. It's not, as you know, it's not your purview. It's the Building Commissioner's purview. So it may behoove us to understand that, right? So that we're not going afoot here.
Well, we used to have a sign review committee.
True.
And that was actually a spin-off of the Planning Board.
Yep.
So how do they get out of not being our purview?
Brian Curry said, and you can check this with Brian again, that the history on how did that happen was it was the responsibility of the Planning Department. But during the '70s and '80s, when there were a lot of subdivision works and the Planning Board was feeling very overwhelmed and so forth, they wanted to offload it. So they got a sign committee and gave it to them. And now it is morphed to the Building Commissioner. I don't know what became of the sign committee.
So who made those changes?
I don't know. I wasn't here. All I know is that at some point...
I think it evolved by itself.
Yeah, yeah.
It eventually...
I just need some information, you're right.
I think we should go to another topic.
Yeah.
Well, you brought up signs.
She's been here so long, she knows who did it.
Will you hear that?
Jed has one more thing, right?
I don't, but I will mention, I mean, I realize signs are an important topic, but I just want to remind the board that it is technically the Building Commissioner's purview.
At this time.
Correct, at this time.
That's by practice, not by charter.
We can look into that.
It's evolved to being that way, right?
Like designed for you.
I'll take a closer dive into it just to make sure that, you know, we're 100% accurate. But we'll report back at the next meeting, I'll say.
Okay, that'll be good. Thank you. Okay, that'll be good, thank you. And on the, you know, some sort of schedule for the long-range comprehensive plan, just so that we come into better compliance. Do you have any idea how many towns actually have done what the Cape Cod wanted them to do, Cape Cod Commission?
I don't.
No, I don't either. No, not many, that's what I suspect. So our next meeting is October 10th. Paul?
Future agenda items.
That's what we were discussing.
I know, but-
Oh, you've got another one?
We heard a very interesting discussion tonight.
We did.
And we heard a lecture on how we should produce these, the process should be. Where do we go from here?
She wasn't totally correct in that.
No, perhaps not, but we'll take a closer look because it was a long list. And we're looking at our rules and regs, and we can look at the rules and regs. Maybe they were good ideas.
So where do we go after this discussion? I mean, Bob spent a lot of time promoting us to look at it, and the whole idea was to have a discussion on this. We had a discussion. Are we going to continue it sometime again? Is that out of our purview, or what are we going to do?
What is the sense of the board, Bob?
So I thought we're information gathering, so if we feel we've got enough information, I could get together with Melinda or Jed and take what we have learned and put it together and then bring it back to the board to see what they think, if it needs further editing or comment. And then it would go to the selectmen, is what we've been told, so.
Any other input on that as a next step?
Charlotte? I'd like to see some continuation of that because we were presented two different sides of the issue tonight where it seemed like it was just one-sided. And particularly where the federal government has a lot of control over what can happen with that track, which I never knew before.
See, I knew that.
Oh, you did. I never knew that. And so it could be that the bicycle groups of both towns, while I'm absolutely in favor of bike paths, either didn't know or were ignoring the preeminence of the federal government for doing away with the track to get the bicycle pack there.
And those were some of the questions I didn't get to ask, was their awareness of certain things.
Well, Mr. Cavosa had input that I at least had never heard, that all the commercial trash goes onto the train.
Right.
And I wonder how many other people just didn't have any inkling. The other thing he said that particularly caught my attention is here are some alternatives to putting it there in this disputed territory that takes away something that we apparently have no control over and need, and had they be considered. But most of all, I'm very impressed that this is really not the right jurisdiction for this. It isn't.
I'm not sure.
Not unless we're convening to do long-range comprehensive planning, and this is our topic. I think then that's been clearly publicized, that this is the forum, this is what we're talking about. Come on down.
Wait a second. If you're saying that this isn't long-range planning, that tearing up a railroad tracks is a short-range decision?
No, quite the opposite. I'm saying this is definitely long-range planning. That isn't our purview. And when we do long-range planning, we convene to do long-range planning.
It just wasn't on our agenda, what you're saying. It wasn't, I agree with you. I thought you were saying we didn't have anything to do with it.
Oh, no, not at all. And Bob started out, his entire preface to what he said two weeks ago was this is long-range planning. And we shouldn't be taking this away. Long-range thinking for our town and the Cape would really preclude doing that. But we would be convened to do long-range planning, which we weren't trying.
We should definitely have it on our agenda and bring all the groups in and have this discussion at some time.
Or we could, we need an agenda that separates, I think, separates out long-range planning projects from regular business that comes in over the transom that we have to facilitate so people can do what they want to build.
Well, how about if we constitute the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee and use this forum and announce that, okay, we do have a committee, we have people on this board that are going to sit on that committee, and we want to use this forum to gather information as opposed to being in the water department room with two or three people, that we could have this discussion in this forum. Where people could make a presentation.
And when Jed and Melinda and the department come back at our next meeting on the 10th with a timeline for when are we going to do the LCP, when are we going to begin the LCP planning? And remember, we decided we weren't going to have three meetings a month?
Yeah.
And it turned out, we didn't have enough business to require three meetings a month. We said we would if we had them. Maybe in order to include the LCP, we do. And then we'd have that particular night, that's for the LCP. And the agenda would reflect that and would be in good order. And maybe we could do it as a board. We wouldn't have to be only three and have difficulty talking to one another.
And it would be publicly notified.
Totally. Would have all the public notice.
And minutes, because we have to have-
Would have a good staff.
We still-
They'd be really enthusiastic.
To deal with the open meeting law, we have to take minutes and publish them and do everything. We had to do that in the Local Comprehensive Plan. And I think that, I think the idea of having it be the third meeting of the month is actually a good one.
Yeah.
Does anyone oppose it?
On a long-range plan.
Yeah, it's nighttime, doesn't interfere with the-
And do you hear that? Pam? We're talking about- You do? That's great. Paul?
Can you hear me?
I did.
The reason I bring it up is, the reason I bring it up is I don't think we should drop the issue.
No.
I think we should continue with it, but there's no hurry. We don't have to do it next week or the following week. We can take our time and deal with it because there's a lot of information coming in. And I think we need to have the information in order before we publicize whatever we're going to do next. But my point is I think we should discuss it at a future meeting on what we plan to do and use that as the forum for setting up whatever we decide.
Well, on the 10th, we'll be discussing our timeline for the LCP planning. It looks like we're of one mind tonight about adding a meeting a month in order to have the time to do it. And it will be set aside just for that. The thing we have to look at is it really impacts pretty severely probably on staff time.
Melinda is always talking about how there's not enough work to do.
I bet she is. Right, no more shoe shopping.
I have another comment to make too, because to me, it's extremely obvious that when it came about, okay, we can't author a letter, that would have to come through the selectmen. This is not our capacity to do that. When you're talking about long-range planning of something like this, this is a major transportation issue for the town of Falmouth. There, I think it's possible, I know definitely twice, maybe three times, we've had Saturday morning meetings with the selectmen over at the library, and those meetings were exceptionally good meetings. And when we get enough information that we feel that it would be worthwhile to do something of this nature, I think it would behoove us to do so, to open it up, to definitely get the selectmen involved. And I think we had local residents coming in too, to offer their comments.
Right, right. Well, I think what happened to the Saturday meetings was COVID.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we couldn't, we couldn't live during COVID, it seems, you know, it was horrible.
It could be that the select board is thinking, it was the select board that initiated them.
Came from the planning board.
Did it? The Saturday meetings? All right, I take it back. They went along with it. Paul?
Didn't it, Bob?
We had a couple of Saturday meetings, and one, most of the committees in town were invited. And it was really unwieldy, very hard to get issues discussed and dealt with. I think if we're going to have a Saturday meeting, we should suggest maybe it just be the Planning Department and the Select Board.
It was Sue Moran who called that one, and that was over at a high school, I believe, and yes.
Falmouth Academy.
Falmouth Academy.
You're right, and that really was unwieldy. That wasn't the kind of meeting I was talking about.
But it should be more focused.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was, you're right, it was wide range.
What happened, it went to the Select Board and they said, well, why invite them? Invite everybody. And that defeated the purpose of having that discussion.
Yeah, one issue.
Okay, and I guess we should be thinking, get out our copy of the LCP, look at our topics, see if those are still the topics. Look at what the Cape Cod Commission has told us we have to address and think what priorities we might want to give them.
I think one of the things was transportation. That was a problem. We didn't come up with anything much for the local comprehensive.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Could I just ask one more? Well, Bob, you listed your three priorities, and they were long-range. For the long-range plan, it was the solid waste, housing, and?
Nitrogen loading in the ponds, so wastewater.
Wastewater.
Wastewater, solid waste.
Thank you, I just wanted to be able to remember that. Now, Paul?
I think those are the most pressing issues in this town.
We probably all agree. So Paul, did you want to move that?
I did.
That's a motion. Did you get a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Pam?